All right, it is now seven o'clock. And in order to honor everyone's time commitments, I'm going to get started. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance, please. Everyone rise and remove your hats if you have them on. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. We'll start with introductions. We'll start with you, Kevin.
Kevin Bassett.
Kathy Mayo.
Bonnie Winona McKinnon.
Teresa Bascom.
Teri Bonzer.
Okay, we have two cases this evening. The first case is a con- Pardon? Yes, um, thank you. Before we begin, we have one member who is absent, so Mr. Bassett will be seated and voting. Thank you. Again, we have two cases. The first case is a continued case from last month. It is case number 2416, VA variance request from Ernstoff, 35 Deerfield Road. Application from Berry Surveying and Engineering on behalf of Michael and Donna Ernstoff requesting a variance from Article II, Section C-2C of the Nottingham zoning ordinance. This variance request is to permit a lot to utilize an existing driveway for access that is located on frontage that is not dedicated, a dedicated minimum of 200 feet contiguous frontage. The property is located at 35 Deerfield Road in Nottingham and is identified as tax map 53, Lot 6-2. We did do a... You're good. You can stay or you can go, Mr. Durocher, it's up to you. I wasn't sure if the other two were showing up, which is why I didn't send you. They don't come and you hit... Mr. Durocher is the other alternate. And if we had had another member, then I would have been seating him. Another member absent. All right, so, Mr. Berry, go right ahead.
So, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering here this evening representing Mr. Ernstoff. We, again, are looking to subdivide the 110 acres at 35 Deerfield Road into a four-lot subdivision from a private roadway. And then the remaining 90 or so acres, we are looking to permit a... The existing access road into the site does not have its frontage on the 200 feet that we've dedicated for the lot. So, we are not asking for a substandard lot in any way. It has 200 feet of frontage. It's well oversized for the town of Nottingham. It's simply the fact that there's an existing roadway that goes into that parcel that's not on that 200 feet of frontage. The board asked at the last meeting if we could do a site walk, to go out and just take a look at this access point, which we've done. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that the board has. We did work through the five criteria at the last meeting. And if the board needs a refresher, I'm happy to put the presentation board up on the application.
Thank you. Well, I think we're all set on the five criteria. It's us three female members here, all attended the site walk. The guys didn't. Did you have a chance to read the minutes?
Yeah.
Or go look at the site?
I did not get to the site.
I wouldn't.
And I have read the minutes.
Okay.
And-
Any questions?
And I do have a question. Let me formulate it for a second.
Sure.
You can float around if you need to.
Okay. Mr. Bonzer, do you have any questions?
Is there-
Oh, go ahead. I thought you wanted me to-
Is there anything new that you can report to the board? For instance, conservation easement. Nothing new. It was noted that the landlords were trying but haven't. Is there anything-
There's no... No, there's nothing new. Sue had reached out to us. I forwarded Sue's information onto the real estate agent as well as the sellers. That's really a private transaction between them and whatever conservation easement holder there might be.
Understood.
I would just point out that regardless of the intended use of the remaining parcel, it still needs to have 200 feet of frontage. It still needs to have access into it. So, it really doesn't change our request here this evening.
Understood.
Was there an issue with the road and the width and the 10 feet? Did that get resolved? If you resolve, Madam... Is this... Am I talking about the same-
You are, but I think when we looked at the-
Did the site walk clarify any of those issues?
The road is a pretty wide driveway.
Yeah, we didn't measure it at all to see the width of it, but it easily... A car is easily able to pass on it.
Very much there.
Understood. Okay. I... That ends my questions.
And as far as sight lines go, we... Ms. Mayo asked the question about the stonewall area that juts out, that would limit looking right if you were pulling out. But Mr. Berry mentioned that they would be, because it is town property, they would be able to shave that off so that there's a better line of sight for anybody exiting the property.
Sounds like a good thing.
And when you look left, we didn't really notice. And even Teri, excuse me, Mr. Bonzer, was out and looked with us.
Right, yes. Didn't look. It wasn't that bad of access. I mean, it wasn't that bad of sight line on the road. Probably, you know, 250, 300 feet, you could see down the road maybe, yeah.
And it's 25 miles an hour, even though people are faster.
Oh, yes. Yes. That's an understatement. But that's on every road.
That sounds like significant enough if the speed limit was adhered to.
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
So, let's just leave... I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Durocher, do you have anything?
No, I had a couple of questions.
Yeah.
I just wanted to go over... So, in '77, they created that 50-foot right away and a five-acre lot. And then, let's see. '84, they divided out the house, right up the road, right? Then in '88, they added another 10 acres to that five-acre lot with the 50-foot right away. So, they had a 15-acre lot then. And then in '93, they did away with all those, right? They kind of lumped it all back. So, they had a 15-acre perfectly legal lot.
Right.
And then they gave that up. Yeah.
Not advisable today, but-
Right, right. But, I mean, they did do that. And then, later on, they had another lot up the hill. And they had like 17 acres. I think they... Well, they had more than 70. They probably had almost 20 acres there. And they gave up... They abandoned quite a bit of that and went to just a two-acre lot, right?
Right.
So, they added another 17 acres to that 90... I mean, that goes into the 92 acres.
Right. That way, the tree farm... This was... Mr. Bonzer is referring to all the work that the Colby family had done on that property over the years. So, the Colbys were essentially, probably for estate planning and other purposes, modifying their lot lines and creating things and combining things over the years. That access has always been there for this purpose, essentially.
But I think the one mistake, you know, when they abandoned that 15 acre, that was a good move. I don't know if they did it for tax purposes. I have no idea why they would have done it. Okay, that's all I have.
All right. Anybody have anything else? No? All right, I will open public hearing. It is 1909. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Anyone here would like to speak against? Anyone who wants to speak at all? All right, well, that was quick. 1910, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board. What is your pleasure? Need a motion either for or against?
I move that we approve the request of... I don't have my paperwork with the names on it, but you could tell me the... I move that we approve the request on case 24016, VA Ernstoff, 35 Deerfield Road, as requested modifications.
There's a second? It's been moved and seconded that we approve case 24-016, VA Ernstoff. Any discussion from the board before we vote? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's two? Okay, it's 3, 2, 0. You all said aye?
What was the vote again?
3 to 2.
3 to 2.
Okay, he said 3 to 0.
He said 3, 2, 0.
Oh, 3, 2, 0. Understood.
Correct.
Okay.
3, 4, 2 against, no abstentions.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Enjoy your day.
You too. Merry Christmas. Yes, don't forget, Mr. Berry, about the 30-day window.
30 days?
Yeah.
I know, you're like, you're gonna do it a lot. This winter. I know, but I legally have to say it. If Bonnie was to be here. All right, our second case is 24-017, VA Phoenix Properties. This is 101 Lakeview Drive. The application is from Jeffrey Philbrook on behalf of Phoenix Properties LLC requesting a variance from Article II, Section C-3A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the installation of an on-demand generator to be located on an adjacent property at 99 Lakeview Drive, tax map number 71, Lot 17. The applicant's property is located at 101 Lakeview Drive in Nottingham and is identified as tax map 71, Lot 16. The applicants, come forward, please. Hello. Introduce yourself and your address, please, and then tell us a little bit about your case, please.
Sure. I'm Jeff Philbrook, 101 Lakeview Drive in Nottingham. I am looking to install an on-demand generator. Actually, myself and my neighbor, Nancy, who happens to be here, had envisioned a... We looked at our lots and there's a spot right between the two properties that is perfect for... It services both of our electrical services and can be serviced by a propane tank. They have agreed that they think it's a good idea. And their generator is permitted and doesn't encroach upon my setback. But the only place to really put my generator is together with theirs. And there... I have an easement here that will be executed if you approve it. And now I'm in front of you.
Can the neighbor come up? Because it's kind of... It's an easement, so there's gonna be questions for both of them and it's easier.
Please state your name and your address.
I'm Nancy Dowling, and I live at 99 Lakeview Drive.
Okay, good. Would you go through the five criteria, please?
Oh, yes. Apologize. I thought it was right here up top.
She's gonna have your copy on there.
Well, that's good, because I thought my copy was right here with this. And these are all of mine.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is the-
It's not all of them, though. I don't know where the rest of the pages are. It's pretty bad when you think you've had something that's supposed to be and it's not. I think that's called age. So, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because I wrote the property is subject to frequent, often lengthy, power outages and is in a remote area town. I didn't write that fully in the sentence. A standby generator helps decrease dependence upon municipal and public utility resources during outages. I would also add to that that where the generator is located only impacts the two of us that are sitting there. And both of the other neighbors that are on my list, Denny up the hill and Jackie next door, neither one of them are there, but both of them were, just said, "Hey, go get it. Everybody out here needs a generator." So, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because this was kind of a tough one, because I didn't write the ordinance. I'm not specifically sure what the spirit is. But as I wrote, I understand that zoning ordinances exist to ensure orderly development and avoid a butter conflict. One of my butters is granting an easement for this project, which we have been cooperating on. So, if I understand the spirit of the zoning board, it's to make sure the two of us aren't angry with each other and we're in complete agreement. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because the property exists, again, in the remote section of town with only one road for egress and entrance. Twice in the past three years, that road has been blocked by fallen trees for extended periods of time. Is the board aware of that? So, the past two winters, there was the tree that fell up by the entrance to the state park. And we were parking in the parking lot for the state park and walking back and forth. I think I trucked about 60 gallons of fuel down through the snow. First-world problem, really. I can't sit here and cry to you about it, but... And then last winter, there was the tree that came down right at the corner and dropped the power lines. And it was-
Couple of weeks ago, we had one too.
We had a power outage, but the road wasn't blocked. In both of these cases, the entrance and egress to the area was blocked.
It was blocked for about 45 minutes. We were sitting at it.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that, because I was just in my house.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we were going out to dinner and it was blocked from both sides. So, it was about 45 minutes we sat on the road.
Yeah, thank you for that. I'm glad I didn't know that. I may or may not admit to the fact that I may have gone under the fallen tree a couple of times to get out and about and get stuff done. If the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. Standby generators, especially in this location, increase the value of a property. An increase in the value of one property historically increases the value of all similar surrounding properties. I will also say that the other two abutters on this list each have standby generators, as do I think about seven or eight other properties on that peninsula. Unnecessary hardship, as Ms. Dowling and I both want this project to move forward and are in agreement on its location, and we, the only two properties affected, the purposes of the general public are not infringed upon. And what did I write here? Standby generators are commonplace, and this one, located in the remote area, helps assure... And again, I speak to the fact that we're in a remote area. And while I'm not going to be calling anybody and asking them when the tree's gonna be taken away if my generator is where it is. As far as the location, I'm not sure. I have two portions of my basement. I do not have a full basement. There are actually two sections of my basement that are half basements because they built up around what was ledge. The side of my property where the electrical service isn't, that would be Jackie's property, is nothing but boulder. It could not go there. My front yard is my leach field. And any further down where there might be a better opportunity to be able to move it over where the generator needs to go, it's either too close to my house, under my deck, or on ledge. So, this really... I've looked around a lot. This really is the location of the generator is the best. Otherwise, we'd do an awful lot of excavation and septic systems and boulders and ledge and everything else. So, there's a hardship to that.
I'd also like to add, too, where the location is going, where the two generators are, they can't be seen from the road. They can't even be seen from the lake. So, it's pretty secluded, the area. It's surrounded by rocks. It's surrounded by trees. You know, all different things, my house, his house. So, it's very, very secluded and just like a tight little spot where they can both be even, you know, let me call it, flat.
Yes. So, that's my spiel.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Now, so you have a mortgage on your property?
Yes, I do.
Now, your bank signed off on the easement?
My attorney prepared the easement for us and-
Right, but did the bank sign off on it?
I'm 99.9% sure they don't have to sign off.
Because I don't know if they would be all that anxious to put a cloud on their title with an easement, so...
Well, it's not-
I think you would have to have... I think you would have... We'd have to have something from them that says they approved an easement.
Yeah, I don't think I did. I'm a real estate agent. I don't think I do, but I can double-check with the attorney. I did talk to my attorney for quite some time, and he drafted it. I think he would have... I could be wrong, but I think he would have counseled me to, you know, check with the mortgage company first.
Because it's not like it's a 10-acre lot where you give it up a little piece. You're giving up a pretty good chunk, like 20 feet deep and...
It's-
So, your lot, your generator is 20 feet... Your generator is 20 feet from the lot, right?
Yeah, they'll sit side by side.
When we went over, they had them staggered. We looked at the... They already had a lot of stuff done already there.
I don't think that... I think they're moving the pads or something. I don't think the pads were in the right spot yet.
That... Most of that, that work wasn't even supposed to have been done. The electrician came out and started throwing some stuff down. The way it was... The way it's drawn is the way it's proposed to be.
Right. So, wouldn't you need two variances? Because you've got a generator.
She's already... They're already... She's already permitted.
Our electrician went and gave... We got a permit. I was not-
But wouldn't you... Yeah, but did you get a permit on what he... How he has it now?
He went... When he went to the town, he applied for both of them. And so, we were granted ours, and Jeff had to come here.
Was told I needed to be here.
Yeah.
Right, but on the plan, it shows your generator side by side. So, your generator would be in the same distance as his generator from the lot line. He must have got... When he got your permit, he must have got it staggered like he has them... He has a two-pad stagger now, right?
My drawing could be... My drawing may not coincide with what the electrician submitted.
Right.
I was told in my drawing, basically, just draw something and get it.
Right.
So, I didn't go crazy.
It's not to scale.
It's also not to scale. All I can tell you is that the building inspector has already permitted third generator.
Third generator.
And my generator, I'm here because an easement alone doesn't qualify for the town.
But I was looking... It looked like by your generator, by your pad, there was a septic tank as a cover for your... I assume it's your septic tank.
Yeah, I have a pump up.
Right. So, is that the pump cover or is that septic tank cover?
That was the pump cover, I believe.
Because the system's 30 years old, and you're gonna be putting stuff in there. I would just wonder... You know, you were talking, you didn't want the generator on your leach field, right? You said you were saying in the backyard, you got your leach field.
Front yard, which would be the location.
My leach field is in the front yard as well, so...
That's a pump chamber. Her leach field is... If you saw the property, there's the retaining wall, and it goes up. The septic system's up there.
Right, and yours is up by the road.
Mine's in my front yard.
By the road.
Basically, that little front yard that you saw of mine, that's mine.
By your gas bottles and...
Yes.
Yeah.
My front yard is the leach field.
Right. But I mean, you're gonna be putting... You're putting the two generators over pretty much where her leach field is.
No, my leach field's in the front yard.
Right, but you're putting it where the tank is, the pump box. I mean, eventually, sometime, you're gonna have to dig all that up. So, you're-
I know. I think he had a copy of where my leach field was and everything, so he... I don't think it's going to affect anything because I think it's just the piping that goes out that the electrical goes over, if I'm right? Yeah, I know.
I can't speak... All I can speak to is the fact the electrician spoke to the building inspector and her generator's probably...
Yeah.
Mine is not.
Right. I would think, you know, you could put yours up in your... Up by your leach field and keep it on your lot, but...
I was told it should not be put there.
All right, anybody else?
I'm just gonna continue on Teri's thread there, just so I get an understanding. You have a dimension on your drawing where I want to say your generator, 25 feet from the house, presumably the foundation, and 20 feet from the deck. Understood. Just curious, why couldn't that generator go in between the edge of your deck and the edge of your property? Is there a reason why you chose to move it onto your neighbor's property?
That's a really good question, and there is a reason for that. I believe it had to do with the deck.
I didn't know if there was a distance or an electrical criteria that was forcing that, but I don't know if you know that answer, Teri. Do you have an input on that?
Was that on the distance from the deck?
No. These generators typically want to be far enough from a house or a deck or a foundation for safety reasons.
Yeah, the usual... I think it's 15, 20 feet, somewhere in that range, I think.
Understood. Okay.
My understanding is it also has to be away from the deck. Because the deck can catch-
So, based upon, you know, Teri's assumption, you know, be it 20 feet from the deck, and that's what is shown on the drawing. So, that's why you had to move it that way. You mentioned septic and all that up front. Is there a reason why you couldn't have go... I don't know which way is north, but towards Lakeview Drive and move it up that way?
That is... My front yard is off of Lakeview Drive.
Okay, tracking. If the same 20 feet is a criteria for the deck, you would have had have gone into the front yard. And then it could have approached on your... You mentioned septic up front.
So, there are a couple of reasons. One, there's my leach field up front. Two, there is ledge. So, coming off of the leach field, going down, that entire hillside is rock.
Yeah.
So, you're talking about a significant amount of excavation to get that done. And the other...
And why?
And Nancy spoke to-
Just pause on that. Why is that? You mean, you'd put a small slab, galley electrical?
For the propane line and the electrical.
The propane line has to be dug. So, it has to go 12, 14, 16 inches in the ground?
Yeah.
And that's where the excavation work that you mentioned would have had to be done? Okay? Okay, understood.
And then there's the electrical pipe that has to go under. And the other consideration with the location of the generator was... Nancy spoke to it, was instead of having my generator sitting in the front yard where everybody in the world can see it and hear it, where the proposed location is relative... Well, the only thing it is... People it is quiet for is the two of us and can't be seen from the road.
Yeah, true. Although, like you said, there are seven others in the neighborhood. If everyone goes down, everyone's lighting up, everyone's hearing them, so...
Hear them. I can't see them.
That's a minor concern from my perspective, but it is a concern.
I try to be a good neighbor, whatever possible.
Because it could only be your house that goes down with you. You're the only tree that gets hit, and everyone hears it, so...
I also try to take into consideration, yeah, I mean, just... I personally don't like eyesores. I'm not necessarily overly pleased with my front yard at the moment. So, I try to take into consideration what everybody needs to see when they cruise around.
Yeah, so, I guess my only concern may be the same as Teri's, is that you wouldn't want to put anything over a feature that could be disrupted in the future and be it And be it sewerage or leach field or whatever, so, um, that's my only concern going forward.
Okay.
I, I don't think that easement is, I, I would want to see something from the bank. It says they signed off on it. That's the second thing that you're concerned with. And, and, and just to make sure I'm, I'm tracking you, Terry, is that the leach field that may or may not be underneath this is your concern.
Right, well, if you look at this, over in this corner, well, they have their, they have their pads. Did you go over there a little? Did you go?
I did not.
Okay.
And, and, I don't know, there is no, there is no plot plan showing the leach field.
Right, they got one pad, they got one pad here, and then the other pad, her pad is back further. That's probably why her, when her electrician went in, he probably met the setback with hers. It's not like this drawing. So this one here is pretty close, there's a, not too far from that tank, from that pad, there's a, you can see a, a riser on a septic, and she said it was the pump box, so...
Okay.
It could be the septic tank too, I'm not sure.
Understood. Is there any clarification that you would need to go forward on, on, on that? In other words, is it a pump, is it a septic?
Well, I'm just saying if the...
Is it a leach field?
If she could put her, if she could put hers near that leach field, and she, you know, she doesn't have a problem because, I mean, maybe in the future she might have to move her generator, but that's not a big deal during the summer to fix, you know, to fix the leach field. But he could also put his on the leach field.
Okay.
And up, you know, and...
Understood.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of room there, really, on, on both ends. It would be better in the, up near the road for the generator because, you know, he could come down, he'd have, might have to run his conduit along the wall, under the deck to come up, because he's got a box there. His electrical panel is right kind of near where it says deck on the drawing.
Mm-hmm. You can't run conduit down the road, it's in ledge.
Well, but you could run your conduit along the, you know, where you, you're not going to come down, you're going to come along the, under the ground by your tanks, and then you would run your conduit along the, uh...
So what would you...
Along this, along the foundation, probably with an LB or something up into the electrical box. So you wouldn't have to bury that part from the, from where it came up to the house, down to the electrical box, you could put your conduit right on the side of the house.
Now you're having to remove my propane tanks.
No.
My propane tanks are right on the front of my deck. So is it, does it, for what you're proposing, there's a significant amount more disturbance involved, plus I'm having equipment go over my leach field. And her, that is a pump chamber, that is not a leach field where her, where her pad...
Right, it's either a pump or the, the tank's got to be close by.
True, but the leach field is above.
Oh, no, I know where the leach field is. It's up, it's, it's probably up on that hill, up near where her driveway, up in that area, right?
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Kathy?
I don't have a problem with the bank releasing anything. We've, we've never had anybody release, any, have to bring a bank into any request for any kind of variance before.
Ever had what?
Oh, that's for the easement, not the variance. It's regarding the easement. Because she's giving up access.
When you were in real estate, you think a bank would be glad to give off an easement on a piece of land that they have a mortgage on?
You know as well as I do bankers watch their own...
Right, they, they want to protect themselves. They're not interested in clouding their own title.
So if, if she's, if she was able to do hers, while it's true this is a second one, I, I don't see that it's a big problem.
It's not that it's hers, it's the easement.
It's the easement that is the...
Him using it is that he's questioning, using her, her land.
Well, he's bringing the bank in. I, I just don't think that's the board's problem.
No, no, but I'm just saying, they're saying they have an easement, but I'm not sure that easement is, I would like to see something from the bank that says, yes, we approve of this easement, because the easement might not be any good. They might say they have an easement.
Easement's...
Well, it is our problem, because we're, we're granting this based on an easement. And if the easement's, if the easement's not any good...
Sir?
That an attorney wrote.
Mr. Bonzer?
Yes.
That easement's been approved by both her attorney and my attorney.
Right, like by the bank?
I've never run an easement by a bank before.
I think you usually have to, because the banks, the banks like protecting, you know, their own, this is, you know, two hundred feet out of their, easement out of their property, really. Because they're, you know, they have the mortgage.
It's a specific easement just for this particular use. It's not an easement for anything. Can't run a car in there.
Is there...
No, but the bank might not be happy to have another generator on, especially if they have to resell this and, and, you know, person coming to buy it, you know, that generator's over there on my property and it's not my generator, you know, it creates a problem then, so... I don't have a problem with the variance as much as, I think the generator could be on, they can have a generator on each, their own property.
Okay, Mr. George, do you have anything?
No, I just, Terry brought up a good point about the bank approving this.
At, at the risk of annoying the board, which I know is a really bad thing to do when I'm asking to grant me a variance, which one of the zoning regulations states that you should be concerned about the bank?
None.
And the biggest, I mean, the people that should be really concerned...
You're saying you have an easement. That's what we're granting it on, an easement. We're granting a variance based on this easement. And I'm not sure this easement is any good. The only reason you're putting your generator over there is because you got an easement.
Yep. A deed of easement is prepared, reviewed, signed, and will be filed if this application is approved.
Okay, so there's no need to put it on file.
So Terry, you may be suggesting that the easement be approved prior to us approving.
Right, right.
And this is on...
To make sure it's, it's filed and signed off by the ba, you know, that the bank says, yep, you know, some kind of letter that says, the bank says, oh yeah, no problem, we don't have a problem with easement.
Is there any issue with the applicant getting the easement approved and coming back, uh, next month, for instance?
So...
Madam Chair, I'll let you take it from there.
I mean, frankly, for me to call Chase Home Mortgage and talk to someone who gets an easement approved should be like probably an act of God, you know? I've, I, once the easement is filed, a bank is not going to go back and, they're not even going to, I hate to say it like this, but they're not even going to know that the easement has been filed and recorded at the registry of deeds. They simply don't go back and do any title searches or anything like that. The only time that someone is going to know that I have an easement on the property is if and when I go to sell the property and the buyer's attorney does a title search on the property. That's the only time that this is ever going to be discovered. You know, I'm not trying to hide anything, but I've never, I mean, it could be months before I get someone at Chase to even like...
But, but bank aside, the question is, can you get the easement um, filed and come back to the board in thirty days, for instance?
Well, but now we're talking a chicken and egg thing, because why would, why would Nancy encumber her property with an easement if we bring it back to you and you don't approve it?
Yeah.
So the only purpose for the, the only reason why the easement exists, actually, it's interesting, because Nancy wasn't even going to do the easement, just like handshake agreement between two neighbors, but made the decision based upon her attorney's recommendation that the easement be done. We were literally on the verge of just, hey, you want to put your generators here? We both need generators, let's go do this, the way we would have done it like thirty years ago. So the easement was her attorney's con, her attorney actually came up with the idea of the easement to, um, for your board. Like they should be okay with that as long as it's an easement. So the eas, I actually have the easement right here, signed and notarized by Nancy. And my intention was, if this was approved, was simply to go to the bank tomorrow, get it signed and notarized, go to the courthouse and just, and just submit it. Because both her attorney and my attorney have agreed.
Understood.
Um, and I believe Nancy's attorney has counseled her on the fact that the only person who actually could stand to be harmed by this situation would be her if she were to sell it and the potential buyers are not happy with an easement for a generator. But the bank really isn't going to care. I, obviously, anybody trying to buy my property is just like, great, thank you for a generator. So honestly, Nancy's the one that's taking all the risk.
I would think if the bank foreclosed, they wouldn't be all that happy. Because now they're in the same boat as trying to sell it and people saying, no, that generator's over on the property, you know?
You know, it's a, it's a waterfront property. I'm not, you know, I don't plan on foreclosing anytime soon and I already have plenty of equity since I purchased it three and a half years ago. And, you know, it's definitely a property that would be in demand. And I don't, you know, in my opinion, I think it's so hidden, it's not even, to me, it's just a... It's not even like part of the property, really. It's like, I call it like no man's land over there. It's wooded, it's rocky, it's full of leaves, it's trees down, it's just... I don't, I honestly, you know, I've been selling real estate for twenty-three years. I don't think anyone, any buyer I've ever encountered would care that they're sitting right there. I've sold crazier situations, that's for sure.
Does anybody have anything else? If not, I'll end the discussion.
Terry, would you, would you consider a conditional on the approval that an easement is, is filed?
Before or after?
Well, after our vote, of course, but, which is, I'm, I'm hearing from the applicants that they're not willing to wait thirty days or file before our decision, and I'm just trying to help move this along.
Well, did, I'm sorry, was your question that the condition, the approval be based on the fact that they file the easement?
That was our intent all along.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, we certainly can say that the, um, condition of approval is that the easement get filed.
Understood, and that was a question to Terry, because I would ask him to, to, to do that, because, because I'm following his lead on this one.
Well, it's not a matter of filing easements, it's a matter of, is the easement legitimate? Because the bank hasn't approved it. They, they're a lien holder. They own...
That is true.
At this point, they own the property at this point.
Right, the bank is a lien holder?
Yes.
Okay.
I could get my attorney on the phone and ask him that question if you want me to.
So I have to, I have to follow his lead on that.
Mr. Bonzer, do you know for a fact that that's a legal requirement?
Well, if you commit with an easement in the bank...
I'm not being a wise ass.
No, but if she owned the property free and clear, that would be fine, but she doesn't.
Her attorney knows that there's a lien on it, and he's already counseled her that this is a, this is a legitimate step to take for this situation. My attorney knows that her, her property is encumbered, my property is also encumbered.
Right.
And he, and he had no issue with it at all, and he's a real estate attorney. I'm not, I'm honestly not trying to be a wise ass.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm just saying that I think...
If you know exactly which law it is that you have a concern over that states that the bank needs to be made aware of an easement.
Well, I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's something in the mortgage, usually there's something in mortgage that says, you know, you can't encumber, you can't do this, you can't do, you know, they, they kind of like it to stay the way the person bought it originally, not, not give pieces away or give easements that will affect them.
We have people in here all the time who are changing their property. We don't, we never ask them about the bank. People who are adding on to their house, people who are remodeling it, people who are putting on a deck.
Oh, no, no, that's not a problem. That's adding to the, but this is, this is an easement taking away from the property, not adding to the property.
It is and it isn't. I mean, she doesn't think it's taking away from her property.
So the, the purpose of my question to you, Mr. Bonzer, was this.
The bank might think...
You're making an assumption that the bank would want to know. There are two attorneys that are already...
Well, you could, if, you could just ask the bank.
It's Chase. Good luck getting the answer. Have you dealt with the bank lately?
No.
My, my simple point is you're saying that you are making the assumption the bank needs to know. Two real estate attorneys have reviewed the document and said that it's good to go as is. So they're not making assumptions. They've actually looked at her mortgage and have said that this easement is fine. That's why I'm, again, I'm not trying to be an ass.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not.
I'm simply asking if you can quote for me what I can quote back to them to tell them that they missed.
Well, I, I know enough about banks that they, they like, you know, they're the lien holders, so they, uh, I don't think they like clouding their title at all unless it's, you know, approved by them.
People place, place their properties in trusts every single day that have mortgages too, so it's, um, in the bank's...
Yeah, they put them in a trust, but that's not, it's still, it's still the same piece of property that hasn't been diminished by an easement, so...
Yes, but the, you know, who is one owner is now the trust, so they're actually changing ownerships of properties and...
But it's...
It's made it more difficult for the bank to be able to do anything if the property gets foreclosed upon it, it's in a trust.
All right, um...
Is the applicant willing to pursue, um, either a filing or, or, or bank information, uh, you know, for thirty days and coming back, or you wanted to sit in today? I'm sort of speaking for you, Madam Chair, but...
I, I, I want to object to the fact that we're requiring the bank to weigh in on this. I don't think it's the bank's business what's before this board. We've never asked anybody for it. I've been on this board for fifteen years. We've never asked anybody for any banking information ever.
It's just more information for the board, that's all.
But it's not part of the ordinance. It's not part of what we're upholding.
Again, I'm just following Terry's lead.
I think Terry's a little off base on this.
Understood.
So, speaking for, speaking for the applicant, um, one, time is a bit of the essence, and that's my fault, it is not yours. I am not putting this on you. I should have had this application before you months ago, so that's on me.
And winter is here and powder hour, this is upcoming.
And we've already had our first outage, um, and I fully anticipate that we will have several more given the way the snow is falling. So, um, I happen to disagree with Mr. Bonzer. I have had, I have issued and received easements in Fremont, New Hampshire in the past. I ran a business there. And never once did I inform my bank. I can understand his concern. I just don't think it's under the purview of your board. However, I'm just an applicant, you're the board. I would be more than happy to have a conditional approval, approval made, and I will head to the bank tomorrow and get the easement that has been approved by both attorneys signed and filed immediately. As far as reaching out to Chase Bank to get somebody from Chase Bank to figure out who they need to talk to, to figure out if they can get, if they want to approve an easement, when they probably have never been asked to do that before, I think that's asking a lot, and I think it supersedes the purview of the board. And that's not, that's her, I, I mean, I wouldn't be contacting Chase, it's not me. And I'm the applicant, she's not, so...
I called Chase the other day to get rid of my private mortgage insurance, and the girl said, I have to mail you the papers. I said, well, why can't I download them online? She says, no, we have to mail them to you, so the process could take about three to four months.
Which will be the process for this?
I'm like, what are you kidding me? To get rid of private mortgage insurance, it's, you know, I, the value is already over eighty percent. She said, no, it's going to take about three to four months, and so that's what I foresee with this.
And this bank the size of Chase isn't even really going to care, but...
Okay. I need to know what you all want to do. Do we want to make a motion?
So Terry, the, so Terry, the applicant has stated they would accept a conditional vote tonight.
Bonnie, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we accept the application as presented, um, conditional upon them filing their easement in the next forty-eight hours. Is that, is that enough time?
Yep, as long as we don't get a snowstorm or a tree falls in our roadway tomorrow, we can't get out.
By the end of the week, what day is today? Tuesday?
Today is Thursday.
By Friday. The sooner the better.
It's just in Brentwood, it's not very far.
Trust me, I, I want to get the thing filed. I would love to be able to give the green light to get this done.
Is there a second? There is no second?
Full seconded.
Can you, can you second?
Oh, wait, no, you can't. Thank you. Kathy, I forgot I didn't seat you. I'm so used to you being there and seated, sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Because I was just about to, but...
A good catch for me tonight, I appreciate it. So by the twentieth, by twelve-twenty. It's been moved and seconded that we approve, excuse me, the application as written, sorry, tickle in my throat, with the condition of filing the easement by twelve-twenty. Sorry, yes, twelve-twenty of twenty-four.
You okay?
I had a tickle in my throat, sorry. It's feeling dry. Is there any further discussion? Not. All right, now you shall proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the motion as written with the condition to file the easement by twelve-twenty, twenty-four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, it's a four, one, zero. My only hesitation, and I didn't say anything the whole time, is that I just don't agree with putting something on somebody else's property. I think that's just trouble for the future, but...
I've got to be honest, I'm not thrilled with it myself, and that's why when people are asking me questions, I have given this a lot of thought. It is the most efficient and advantageous way to do this. What do you require for proof and who do I get it to?
Get it to Alana and...
She's in the office.
Yep, in the, in the...
In the tax collector's office.
Just so that we know.
On Friday, she's going to be in the planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning.
Yeah, the land use office at the end of the hall.
Yep.
And just some... And just something from the courthouse that you filed it.
I have to pay to file it, so a receipt would probably work.
Yeah, I guess they.
Which would be just a, a book number, book number, page number.
And just, just know that there is a 30-day window on all our decisions. You could have somebody doubt it, but there may be somebody who appeals, so, I know you're going to be moving forward with it, but there's.
So if they appeal and win and you've already done it, you'll have to move it.
Who can appeal?
Anybody.
Anybody.
So it's not just the Butters?
No. Anybody in the world.
Interesting.
Or any citizen, or.
Not a ham.
That could be quite chaotic.
It doesn't happen very often.
When you pay at the registry, on their receipt, it has the registry file number, you can just take a picture or scan that and be able to make.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
And Alana, I want to let you know that twice now I have gone out to sites and they have not been marked, are you remembering to?
Yeah, it's even on the application.
We've, we've got to push that, and I don't know what we can do, but it's, thankfully because they had already started work, we were able to see where they were going with it. But you, you hadn't marked that site for us.
There, Asher, the woods.
All we saw was.
When did you go out?
Sunday. We could see the path, I mean, we knew where you were.
Was it after the rain? Because I, I know Rob, Rob put a, a, a grade stake up.
Oh, he had grade stakes for the property line.
No, he put them up for the section.
Oh, were they on the end of the easements? But, I mean, we could see where you were putting your generators, so that wasn't, that wasn't the problem.
Rob and I did talk about that, I'm pretty sure he put grade stakes up, but.
No, there were two grade stakes, but they were on the property.
All we saw was property line, and then we saw the thing, so we knew that where it was, but there needs to be something that will at least say, you know, like this site or tape or something that shows it.
I think when they dropped the gravel, the guys did.
Oh, that could be, that could be.
I apologize for that.
That's okay.
We did make a point.
But just remind people when they come in, because, like, even for the first case, when I was driving up and down, it was like, I think this is where it is, because I know the, one of the Butters' families, I'm like, this has got to be the, the location, but there was nothing that said that this was the site.
Why are we meeting so late in January? Well, that's the application deadline.
Okay. All right, so let's continue on our agenda. There's no public here for public comments, so I don't need to open and close anything here on that, and there wasn't any public or comment on the, that last case we had either. The 2025 meeting schedule is in your packets, please look these over, and if you can see anything write-off, let Alana know, if not, look, look it over when you get home or whatever. But the hearing dates are our usual dates, I don't see anything that's going with a holiday at the moment. And notice our August meeting is joint with the planning board.
Well, we have August, then we have a joint, right?
Correct. Any, anything from anybody on these dates? As you can see, you want, move to approve the planning, excuse me, the zoning board, public hearing and application schedule?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
Move the 2025, which also happens to be in the year 2026.
Right.
A little forward, forward planning is always good. Good job, Alana.
It's moved to approve the schedule, anybody want to second that?
I'll second that.
Bonnie, it's been moved and seconded to approve the schedule, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a 5-0-0. All right, minutes?
Minutes.
11:19 and 11:30.
19? Great.
The 19th of November, and then the 30th, which was our site walk.
Understood. Alana, could you just clarify 126, which has October 15, 15 in it, and then in 136, after adjourned, there's some more verbiage that says October 15. And I'm just, was that a, I just don't quite know.
On the 19th of November, where are you talking?
Yep, the, the November 19th, 2024, 7:00 PM, draft minutes, and I'm looking at line 126.
Line 126.
It has an October 15th, 2024 meeting, which is okay, and then I just see the same date down to 136, and I.
Yes.
And I just don't understand.
I asked about that, and she was supposed to correct that.
Oh, I must have just not printed out the newer version.
Okay.
So, probably did already correct that.
Okay. Yes.
You just found it before I did.
Well, she emailed the minutes to me to look at, and then that was one of the things I asked her about, and she wrote back and said, sorry, I was fiddling with things and I meant to delete that, so, okay, we just make sure that the corrected minutes get filed.
So, so is there a different date in 136 than October 15?
No, that, because we'd already been, you were already adjourned.
Already adjourned.
This needs to just be deleted.
Yeah, 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 okay, that's, that's what I expected. I just, I, so.
Thank you for reading and catching that.
Well, you hired me for something. So I'll, I'll make a motion if the Madam Chair is ready for a motion.
All right, yes.
To accept the minutes on November 19th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, as writ.
Well, with the correction.
With, with the correction of line 136, 137, and 138, or the, the deletion thereof.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of November 19th, 2024, with the correction of deleting lines 136, 7, and 8, referencing October minutes. Any discussion?
I'd just like to ask if we have a new recording secretary, that's the same old one?
No, we do have a new one. That was announced.
Did she come to the meetings?
No.
Will she?
She will not be coming to the meetings, no, she, she does the minutes on the video.
Okay.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 5-0, and the site walk. And look these up as well, anything, anybody?
So the unofficial ones, yes.
Motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes on Saturday, November 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
You're all seconding, Bonnie.
I know, Mike, because I'm the second.
Makes it easy.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes for the site walk of November 30th, 2024, any discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to ask Alana, if the Conservation Commission weighed in after the site work as they said they would?
Yes, they did, we got a.
So, Mooney, did we get some kind of a?
We received today a notice from Cheryl Smith.
Oh, it was today?
It came today.
I don't know.
Yep, you're not in the office.
Yeah, I'm not in the office, so.
Yes, we did.
And you don't have it?
I, I do have it, it's an iPhone.
Of course.
Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, it's short.
Or would you like, well.
I can definitely forward it to everybody tomorrow if you want.
Okay.
Is it?
We've already voted on it, so it's kind of.
I was going to say, is it prudent to our vote that we just did?
We didn't vote. We, it was a motion, but we haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted yet.
It says, at the Conservation Commission meeting of December 16th, 2024, relief from Article 2, Section C to C of the ZO requested the, oh, the voting on the application.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, I, I'm tracking you now, I thought you were talking about the minutes. In short, the relief requested is to allow access to a proposed new lot via an existing driveway of record that is not located on contiguous 200 feet of frontage, and there does not exist the setback regulation recently adopted in the zoning reg for an abutting lot. Members of the commission are aware of the existing driveway and have accessed the parcel via this access point to walk the area in the past with the owner and again with their representatives to evaluate and discuss the conservation values. The commission and other agencies have determined that the landscape provides exceptional natural habitat and critical connectivity to other large land blocks, including watershed values, and has expressed an interest in the preservation of these values to the land owner, a local land trust, the real estate agent, and the developer. We believe the present driveway allows a minimum access disturbance to this proposed large lot, rather than the alternative location indicated during the ZBA site walk of November 30th. To this relief request by the applicant, the commission members are in favor of allowing relief. Respectfully submitted, Cheryl Smith.
Well, given that we approved it, I'm happy to hear that.
Yes, and I apologize for not mentioning that earlier with not having a copy, I totally.
That's okay, just spaced it, spaced, but the minutes.
Plus the fact that they were okay with it.
Yeah.
Good catch, Bonnie.
That's why we're a team.
Well, I mean, if that was a negative.
Yeah, we would be feeling bad.
What would we, you know, is there any ramifications that it didn't come in in time for us to make a prudent decision?
To bring it up.
Unless not even bring it up, so.
Bring it up if it were a negative.
Just ignore it, yeah.
I would have noticed, noted that, that it was a negative, but anyway.
Thank you.
So the minutes, getting back to it. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the site walk of November 30th. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
An abstention.
I wasn't there. And I will abstain also.
Okay, so three, what about you?
Do I get the vote?
Is there any way that we can make the letter from the Conservation Commission part of the minutes or?
Oh, it would be part of, it would be part of the packet. Right, it goes in their file.
Okay, you can post it, right?
Great, thank you.
Did I miss anything on number five, select board and staff?
It's coming. I wanted to get the minutes approved.
Oh, you jumped around.
I did, all right, so.
Madam Chair can do that.
I can. All right. Staff, board, and member updates, anything, Alana, coming up?
No applications for next month, yet. I think it comes today, I think they have till, like, either Friday or Monday, so.
Friday's the 20th.
And nothing?
None, nothing right now.
Okay, cool.
December 23rd is the deadline, because that's the only day.
Okay, and nothing new for us that you're coming down the road or anything like that? Okay. Are, have books been ordered?
I believe so, they did, Blair did ask me about that a while ago, a few ago, so yeah, I believe that's been ordered.
Okay, good.
So this, the question is, when do the, what is it, two-year, three-year cycles come around?
Oh, yes.
So, so, I can review that one next time I see you in the office or, or whatever, but.
Yes, I sent you an email from the town clerk.
Correct.
And you, I forget what your reply, you agreed that they were all correct.
Correct.
Okay, so you were, what was your question about them?
Am I due?
Oh, okay, you want to know, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, so, so.
Whatever was on, what's on the website is correct.
So maybe next month or whatever, you could say who's due coming up, because it's April, right?
Who has to rerun, is that what you mean?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm.
You were wondering if you have to rerun this year.
Yeah.
Who has to run if they wish to remit?
Who has to run, but alternates get, get upped.
You're up, but you'll get, you'll get appointed, I guess.
It just feels like it's been 10 years. Yeah, it feels like it's, yeah, it's been a long time, so, so anyways, that's all I had for board member updates.
All right, I think it's you and Kathy that are the ones, I'm looking to see, I've got it here.
But Kathy gets voted and I get upped, right?
Correct.
Is that how it goes?
Does it feel like it, seems like you just came on.
Does it feel like you just got one?
No.